This regular meeting of the Waco Independent School Board is hereby called to order. All items which may be discussed or voted upon this evening have been posted as required by state law. I really do want to extend a warm welcome to all of those present and to our television viewers. The Board's purpose is to set goals, listen to reports of the superintendent, approve budgets, contracts, and personal appointments, and to make policy for the district. We are not here to make management decisions or solve problems of individuals. Management is the responsibility of the superintendent and her staff. I would just ask right now if you would please turn your cellphones to silent. And we really do appreciate the time that you've taken to join us here and for your interest in Waco ISD. Este junta regular de Waco ISD está convocada. Les extiendo un amable bienvenidos a todos los que están presente y los que nos observan por televisión. También los quiero compartir que todas las conferencias están disponibles en la página de Waco ISD YouTube el lunes después de la conferencia. En ese página pueden escoger su idioma así toda la información que se fue discutida está disponible para todos. Por favor apájar sus teléfonos. Les agradecimos el tiempo que compartimos con nosotros y su interés en Waco ISD. We as the Board of Trustees follow a set of ethical standards. And one of those sections is equity and attitude. We as the Board of Trustees will be fair, just, and impartial in all of our decisions and actions. We will accord others the respect that we wish for ourselves. We will encourage expressions of different opinions and listen with an open mind to others' ideas. And I heard that no one has signed up for public comments. Okay, so we will go ahead. If you could pause with me as we take time for prayer, contemplation, reflection, and Thank you. We'll move on to our pledge.
Our pledge leaders this evening are Jocelyn Rene Jacinto and Kayden Cervantes, both of Kendrick Elementary School.
Of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
The Board would meet me in front of the dais?
Jocelyn Rene Jacinto is a fifth grader and her favorite subject is math. She is active in the theater, Girl Scouts, Science Club, and also serves as a library aide and on the Kendrick Student Leadership Team. She is a Swiftie and enjoys listening to the music of Taylor Swift and loves to draw. Jocelyn would like to own her own business when she grows up. She is the daughter of Rene Jacinto and David Jacinto. She is Jocelyn Rene Jacinto. Kayden is also a fifth grader at Kendrick Elementary School. His favorite subject is math. He is also active in the Science Club and serves on the Kendrick Student Leadership Team. He enjoys playing baseball and video games. His favorite is Fortnite. Kayden is also active in his church, his house, and he participates in children's church and is a junior leader where he is learning to serve. Kayden is the son of Alexandria Cervantes and Jonathan Cervantes. And Isabel Lozano serves as the principal of Kendrick Elementary School and she's with us this evening as well. Next, we'd like to recognize tennis and middle school students Rachel Maxile and Gabriel Martinez. They were selected respectively for the elementary and middle school All-State Choir. Applicants recorded themselves singing a song and musical scales to submit to online judges. One of the thousands who auditioned, of the thousands who auditioned, only 250 are selected, including Rachel and Gabriel. They will spend three days this summer in San Antonio learning, rehearsing, and performing at the TCDAs convention. These students are instructed by teacher Jacob Garcia, who is with us this evening. Next, we'd like to recognize Waco High School's Director of Athletic Performance, Coach Leo Coach Burks is selected as the National High School Strength Coaches Association Coach of the Year for the entire state of Texas. Coach Burks is in his third year as the WHS Athletic Performance Director, where he applies his expertise in athletic performance, stand right here because she wrote a lot, to enhance the athletic abilities of student athletes. He earned both his bachelor's and master's degrees in kinesiology from Tarleton State University, where he was also a graduate strength coach for multiple sports programs. Coach Burks is married to Misty Burks, who's here. She is our school nurse at Lake Air Montessori School, and they also have three children who are here with us, Josiah, Kyler, and Nyla. And with a passion for sports and a commitment to helping others reach their physical potential, Coach Burks strives to make a positive impact on the Waco High community, both on and off the field. Ladies and gentlemen, the amazing Coach Burks. Next, we recognize Waco High School art teacher Bonnie Holstrom. She is one of only six in the entire state of Texas to be selected as a 2024 Texas Arts and Education Association Leadership Scholar. This two-year program develops and identifies leadership skills and fine arts teachers. Through the application process, Ms. Holstrom shared ways she would like to grow as a leader, including becoming a better advocate for her students and colleagues. And next, we'd like to recognize someone that tries to stay behind the camera, and that is our Waco ISD TV producer Jessie Patello. Jessie earned multiple awards at the Texas School Public Relations Association Conference this year. Mr. Patello earned seven state awards for his video work here in Waco ISD, including one bronze, two silver, and five gold medals for videos he created on Hispanic Heritage Month, First Day of School, Hillcrest-Baylor Parade, Classroom Close-Up, and School Board Recognition Month. Jessie recently received his 25-year pin in the district, and in his 25 years, Jessie has earned more than 200 awards on behalf of Waco ISD. We are now ready to recognize our teachers who earned the Teacher Incentive Allotment for improving student academic performance and closing the learning gap. We have 90 teachers this year who are newly qualified for this pay boost. Forty-four of those are Waco ISD elementary teachers, and we're going to introduce them to you now. First from Cedar Ridge Elementary, fourth grade teacher Dorothy Bellaud. We're going to have Dara Alta Morano from Bells Hill Elementary, fourth grade teacher, Next, we recognize Cedar Ridge Elementary, fourth grade teacher Joy Bellaud, and she Next, we have Angela Fullton from Bells Hill Elementary, third grade teacher. She earned recognized status. From Hillcrest Elementary School, Rebecca Raswell, teaching fourth grade, exemplary Eunice Caballero from Bells Hill Elementary School, pre-kindergarten bilingual teacher earning exemplary status. Shamika Carpenter from Cedar Ridge Elementary School, earning exemplary status as a PE elementary teacher. From West Avenue Elementary, Alicia Chamberlain, third grade, English as a second language teacher, earning recognized status. Maria Chapa from Kendrick Elementary School, pre-kindergarten bilingual teacher. She actually earned this last year, but this year she moved up a level to master level, the top level. Next, we recognize the Kendrick Elementary Teacher of the Year, Sharonda Kraft, first grade ESL teacher earning exemplary status. Next, from Lake Air Montessori School, Arid Enriquez. She is a pre-K teacher earning recognized status. Clarissa Gallegos from Bells Hill Elementary School, fourth grade bilingual teacher, earning recognized status. From West Avenue Elementary School, Carolyn Green. She is an SIT math teacher earning exemplary status. From Parkdale Elementary, this PE teacher earned exemplary status. Erin Hallie from Kendrick Elementary School. This pre-kindergarten ESL teacher earned master status. Paula Hoover from Hillcrest Elementary School. This music teacher earned elementary status. She said with her pay boost, she'll be buying a new roof, a new roof for the house. From Dean Highland Elementary, Jo Hughes. This PE teacher earned exemplary status. Shelby Killen from Bells Hill Elementary School. This fifth grade teacher earned recognized status. Heather Lanford from Hillcrest Magnet School. This SIT teacher earned recognized status. From Parkdale Elementary School, this pre-kindergarten teacher earned master status. From Dean Highland Elementary School, Sandra Maxwell. This SIT teacher moved up a level from last year. She was recognized and she's moved up to exemplary. From West Avenue Elementary School, Angela Mendez. This kindergarten ESL teacher earned master status. This Kendrick Elementary, third grade bilingual teacher earned recognized status. From Cedar Ridge Elementary School, Kirsten Neff. This art teacher earned recognized status. Kendall Rabine, Hillcrest Magnet School, kindergarten ESL, recognized status. From Parkdale Elementary, Jane Ragland, recognized status. From South Waco Elementary School, Barbara Ridenius. This pre-kindergarten elementary teacher earned exemplary status. Desiree Scott from Crestview Elementary School, fourth grade teacher, exemplary status. Jennifer Stevens from Hillcrest Magnet School. This PE teacher earned recognized status. Azorio Sumpan. Parkdale Elementary, first grade ESL teacher earned exemplary status. Sarah Tatum from Bells Hill Elementary School, second grade ESL teacher earned recognized Miranda Unger from Dean Highland Elementary School, first grade ESL teacher earned exemplary Crisal Villa Flores from Dean Highland Elementary School. This second grade bilingual teacher earned recognized status. And our last honorary this evening is Allison White from Lake Air Montessori School. Allison teaches first, second, and third grades and earned exemplary status. So those are your elementary teachers, and next month we will be recognizing another 40-plus who are secondary teachers who earned this honor. And in total, they are earning money from the state added to their paychecks, our Waco ISD teachers of $2.8 million this year. So we'd like to ask Dr. Gutierrez and Dr. Ruiz, who administer this program, to come forward and be part of the picture. And let me just share with you that many school districts do not participate in the Teacher Incentive Allotment because it is a ton of paperwork and jumping through hoops and providing documentation and data reviews and things. And this district decided to do it, and these two ladies are what makes it happen. So, teachers, we appreciate you. Thank you for being amazing. Okay, we're now ready to continue with our meeting? We are now ready to recognize our April Community Partner of the Month. Ladies and gentlemen, put your hands together for the amazing Junior League of Waco. This organization is committed to advancing women's leadership for meaningful community impact through volunteer action, collaboration with the community, and through the training of volunteers. Junior League of Waco members work together on the organization's signature initiatives. This includes the power of pre-K that promotes pre-K education awareness and helps empower pre-K educators. The league also provides fundraising opportunities to support early learning initiatives in Waco ISD, most recently with the 5.5K for pre-K. The Junior League of Waco also hosts the annual Women's Empowerment Summit each year for both Waco High, University High, and Brazos High School to encourage, empower, and inspire the next generation of leaders in our community. This year, more than 200 high school students were able to explore career opportunities, post-secondary education options, and connect with female community leaders, much in part to our friends at the Junior League of Waco. Thank you very much.
It's always a fun moment in the evening when you're handing out these TIA certificates and you know each person is getting extra money on top of their salary for all of the wonderful work they're doing. And just 2.8 million, that's nothing to scorn. That's a significant amount for these teachers, and they deserve it. So moving on to item number five, Superintendent's Report. Dr. Kinkannon.
All right, thank you. We've been talking about TIA all across the district as we've been giving our spring update presentations and how that money goes into that retirement average for their highest average salary. So it's not just getting the money for a few years, but it's getting it for a lifetime in terms of raising those averages. So that's really significant. And I also want to point out how significant that All-State, our All-State students are. That's very rare, All-State choir and music. And I've had the opportunity to go to those conferences and see students perform and be rehearsed with by some of the best teachers in the state, and they are truly remarkable students to be able to get that honor. So it's a really big deal. I have a couple of items, well, a few items this evening that I want to talk to you about. First, pre-K roundup, and that fun and exciting event is happening again. Seems like we just had it, and the school year has gone by so quickly. But that will be happening on Saturday at the Waco ISD Stadium parking lot from 9:00 to 2:00. If you know of any families with a child who will be four years old by September 1, please encourage them to attend. We do have information on the website. We've been pushing out the flyer that you see on the screen, and there is a pre-K hotline available to assist families. And I'm going to read that number out a couple of times. That's 254-799-0035. Once again, if you have questions about pre-K, there's a hotline, 254-799-0035. Next item is Academic Achievers Recognitions. We've provided you with the programs from our recognition ceremonies, which were held last night and last week. And those were just really special ceremonies that honored sophomores, juniors, and seniors who have maintained a GPA of 96.5 or above. And they were honored, and we also gave the seniors in that group the opportunity to pay tribute to a special teacher who's made a difference in their life. And so this program that you have has those senior tributes in it, in addition to a listing of students. So very excited about that, and they were beautiful celebrations. I want to thank Paula Miller for putting those together and counselors at our high schools. And we had just a great showing of students, families who came out to support them, and of staff there. So I also want to say thank you to each one of you who were able to make it, Trustee Vidanya, Trustee Grant, Trustee Patton, and President Cordawig for helping us honor those students. Okay, 24, 25 school start and end times. We've received a lot of feedback about school start and end times over the last several weeks. And based on the feedback that we received from staff and community members, and then in the Transportation Committee's review of that feedback, we will set next year's school start and end times with the adjusted bell schedule that we previously discussed on April 4. So elementary and high school start and end times will be adjusted 15 minutes earlier than our current start and end times, while middle school will be adjusted to be 15 minutes later. That will give us a three-tiered bus system and the opportunity to provide more reliable and efficient transportation services. And we know that not everyone will be happy with that change, but we do believe that this change will help us improve upon our current situation. And I've been talking to staff all across the district about the why regarding the time between routes, as well as the shortage of bus drivers. So we want to announce that so we can move forward with communicating it to our families and getting everyone settled for next school year. Okay, the big item is our budget update this evening, and I want to just tell you that we have continued since our last meeting to focus on the budget deficit by identifying positions and other ways that we can save funding in response to that anticipated budget deficit. So to date, we've been busy having staffing meetings for weeks on end. Feels like a very long time. And to date, we've cut approximately 130 positions across the district for next school year. And to date, we've cut approximately 130 positions across the district for next school year. And as we said we would, in most cases, when a position was cut, we were able to place the person in another position. However, we are still working to place about 10 to 15 employees. And that'll take a little time as vacancies become available. But Dr. Lopez and Dr. Carradine have been diligently working through that process. We have cut more than 6 million, 6.3, I think I heard. Yep, 6.3 million has already been cut from next year's budget. And I would say about 750,000 of that has been cut from Waco ISD and Transformation Waco Central Office staff. Now, not all of those funds are local funds. And remember, that's the local budget where we have the deficit. Some of those positions are paid through other sources like Esser State Comp, Title I, and some other special revenues. But each cut we've made allows us to free up some funding in one of those other areas, except for Esser, which is going away, to move some qualifying expenses in. So, Cheryl and her team are working through, continuing to work through that budget process. And we'll continue to give you updates on how that's shaking out locally. But we think that's about where we want to stop for now in terms of cutting. We want to be cautious about this. We do have a healthy fund balance. And we want to, we just want to not go too deep. And we want to make sure that we're making the right decisions. So, you know, that feels like a good place to stop. It was not easy, I will tell you. It has been a hard few weeks getting to that point. And I'm really proud of the team for pulling together and making this happen. And everyone had to give a little bit. We still believe that it's going to be challenging to give a raise, but we don't want to take that off the table completely yet. There is an issue that we've identified on our teacher hiring schedule. And so, we've been working with Tasby on our compensation plan for the last couple of years. And we moved from the old traditional step schedule to a hiring schedule. So, if a teacher comes in with four years of experience on the hiring schedule, they get a certain salary. And it's not meant to go up to the next number automatically. Our raises have been based on the midpoint of the salary schedule. So, but we do realize that people still have that mindset. And then, we believe that we need to fix, we're going to have to make some adjustments to fix that hiring schedule because we don't want a new teacher to come in making more than an existing teacher. So, we have to work on that yet. And we do intend to fix it. And there will be an associated cost to fix it. But that's going to be important to our staff. So, we need some more time for that, but I wanted to mention that to you. Also, I'd like to mention that we will be paying out the last round of retention bonuses that you all approved in July of 2021. So, teachers who have been with us will get the final third of a $10,000 retention bonus in their September paychecks. And those who are hired in '22 and '23 will get $2,500. And those were not intended to be pay raises, right? Those were bonuses. But I do want to point out that we are still paying those out and they are higher than the raises that we would typically give in a year. So, that's kind of where we are on the budget. And I entertain any questions that you have about that.
Mr. Patton?
So, Dr. Kinkanen, you said we've cut 6.3 million in next year's budget. Where is that putting us with our debt?
I would defer to Ms. Davis on that and say that she may need a little time. She's continuing to... Yep. Yeah, we need more time to, about 14 million. So, we'll continue to work through that and come back to you. I'm really pleased at this point that we're downsizing, but we haven't cut major programs in the district. And so, we can be really proud of that. And like I said, everyone came together and we're working through it. And that's all I have.
Yes, Mr. Davis?
How many positions did you say have been cut? And only 10 to 15, we're still looking for them places in the district? I'm just really happy to hear that positions that were cut there are still being added.
Yes, we cut about 130 and 10 to 15, we're still trying to place. So, some people, some of those, we did have some resignations. And I don't know how many of those we placed internally, but most of them. And we just, you know, it's a big puzzle, right? So, if you think about a thousand-piece puzzle, this is probably 5,000-piece puzzle. I don't know. So, it's been a process to get here, but we've been really trying to take care of people along the way. And I would say thank you to Dr. Lopez and his team, who, we've really tried to make sure that we touched every single person who was impacted. It was a little shaky at first. It was, you know, there was a lot of emotion around it and a lot of anxiety and worry over it. But everyone settled in and we got it done.
Well, thank you for that. No, that was not easy. Moving on to item number six, Information Items and Reports. Mr. Grant, do you have any discussion on that?
No.
Mr. Davis?
No.
Mr. Vidonya? Mr. Guillory?
No.
Mr. Ochoa?
No.
And Mr. Patton?
No.
I do have one question, Ms. Davis. Do we know when that stop, do you have any idea when that stop loss is going to kick in? Seems pretty cut and dry to me. Okay, moving on to Consent Agenda. Would you like anything pulled, Mr. Grant? Anything pulled, Mr. Davis?
No.
Anything pulled, Mr. Vidonya?
No.
Anything pulled, Mr. Guillory?
This is what we discussed.
Okay. 7-F? Anything pulled, Mr. Ochoa? Anything pulled, Mr. Patton?
No, ma'am.
Okay, I will entertain a motion to accept the Consent Agenda as presented with the exception of 7-F.
A move.
Thank you, Mr. Guillory. Do I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Davis. Any discussion, Mr. Grant? Any discussion, Mr. Davis? Any discussion, Mr. Vidonya? Any discussion, Mr. Guillory?
No.
Any discussion, Mr. Ochoa? Any discussion, Mr. Patton?
No.
Okay, all in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, passes unanimously. Moving on to 7-F, Renewal for Fire Alarm Repair, Security, and Fire Alarm Monitoring Services. Is there any discussion on that, Mr. Grant?
No.
Any discussion, Mr. Davis? Any discussion, Mr. Vidonya? Any discussion, Mr. Guillory? Oh, Mr. Guillory is recusing himself, correct? Abstaining, okay. Any discussion, Mr. Ochoa? Any discussion, Mr. Patton?
No.
Hearing that, I entertain a motion. I'll entertain a motion. Thank you, Mr. Davis. Do I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Grant. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, passes six with one abstention. Mr. Guillory? Okay. Hopefully, we got all the language on that one right. Okay. Okay, here we go. Looking on to, moving on to item number eight, Review and Discuss, Waco High School Construction Update. This is really exciting. Mrs. Barretta and crew? Mr. Eglin, okay. I was looking at the packet and the drone footage on that is so exciting just to see the progress. Really excited. Looking forward to this.
Real quick?
Yes, Mr. Patton?
I want to say thank you to you guys for allowing us to tour the Education Foundation tour that we took on Wednesday. People were blown away. They were very excited. And I know it interfered with your day, but I just wanted to say on behalf of Education Foundation, thank y'all for your time and for being such good hosts.
Absolutely. We enjoyed it.
Okay, take it away.
All right, so, Waco High School Project Update. We have some slides to go through and we have some drone footage and videos to go through in the beginning here. Here's the first video.
Yeah, this is similar to what we presented last time, kind of the drone footage, but this is just a more recent drone from just, I think, about a week ago showing the construction progress. You're coming in here off the events entry. You can see next to the gym stand, we're gonna circle around along New Road here. That's gonna be your theater support spaces. And you have your band hall right there on the corner with those large windows that you're seeing. This whole wing is the Performing and Fine Arts Wing. So, you can see the tall fly loft of the auditorium there, a little bit in the background. And as we circle further around, you're gonna see the choir hall right there. And then, continuing around, you'll get into our courtyard. On the right side of that is all the visual arts labs. We have our library on the right in the back and then, that large dining commons there on the left. And then, we're gonna get into our two-story classroom addition there, which has all of our general education classrooms as well as all of our science classrooms there with lots of open collaborative space. There's a lot of small group rooms, large group rooms. We have our teacher think tank model there. So, you have that center where all the teachers can really collaborate and work together. As we're kind of circling back around here, you're gonna start to see the main entrance on the left there. And this is where the parent drop-off loop is gonna be. In this corns also, there's a drainage retention pond as well. You can see there's starting to get more of the earthwork around. And as we're coming around, you can see also just the progress of the exterior materials. Last time we saw, there was no brick, there was no masonry on there. It was just all kind of sheathing at that point. But you're seeing all the brick starting to get installed, EPIS metal panels starting to go up as well. As well as you can see, all the windows are starting to go in. And we're mostly complete with that as well. This is the second one. We're gonna kind of pan up to where we left off at the front entrance and kind of take you back around to what we've already seen and actually continue a little further on past that. So, again, we're at that main entry. You can see on the left is gonna be your administration wing. And just past that would be your special education on that side. And as we continue around that same two-story volume, you can see all the workers on the roof. You can see rooftop units, some of that mechanical equipment starting to be placed and working there. All the roofing you can see is on, which that wasn't all completed, you know, last time we gave an update, as well as that tall curtain wall system there in the front. As well as just seeing all those, I think, exterior materials is the big wow factor at this point. It really starts to come together as a cohesive building. And again, we're gonna get a little flyby of that courtyard. And some of y'all who have toured it can attest to just how massive that courtyard space is, you know. And that's all gonna be fenced in right from that building corner on the left all the way back to that choir building. So, there's gonna be a massive area where you can hold assemblies. Have just a lot of great events and memorable spaces here for you. Again, continue on the Performing and Fine Arts Wing. Again, starting to see those materials come up. You know, there's gonna be EPIS right there on that large window next to the band, but they're still in process with that. That same system is what's on the fly loft in the background. It's kind of like a stucco type system.
Is that blue the final color?
It does, it looks, the coloring isn't really accurate. But what is, it's gonna be, yeah, there's two cool tones of gray, which kind of match the metal panel that is being used as well. So, there's a darker gray of that shell and then the lighter gray on the inside. So, again, you're now at the events entry. You see your black box just to the left of that entry. And then, there's a big overhang canopy there. That's where you're gonna see that really red metal panel denoting that entry. You're circling now around the gym volumes. This is the auxiliary gym with all those windows. And the main gym is just behind that. And then, we're coming into the CTE kind of athletics area. So, this is gonna be actually your cup yard, your central utility plant. So, that's where all the guts of the building are gonna live, where those large overhead doors are for access of that equipment and, you know, maintenance and replacement of that. You can see your cup yard starting to kind of come up with that CMU masonry there. That's gonna be tall walls, you know, kind of equaling the height there where the cooling towers will live. You see those large windows of your weight room, which is out onto the Tyson Field. Now, we're kind of circling around more of that CTE. You have your training room, you have your JRTC, you have all your CTE business marketing labs. CTE program is right there in this kind of section. And then, on this building corner, you can, the taller volume is gonna be your Autotech. And you can see as we're getting close here to the actual, the current, you know, Waco High School building, the Titan Strains there, which we'll kind of touch on more later in the presentation. Again, we're kind of circling around that courtyard is now, I call it the CTE courtyard there, which is in, you know, there because of the building shift that we did during design. And there's the kitchen, the taller volume there. And then, over the admin and the special education.
We got to see the beam that we all signed.
Oh, that's awesome.
It's still exposed right now. I should've wrote my name bigger. It was hard to find it.
So, heading into just progress photos, this is from timestamp from October, November. You can start seeing the shell of the building, the steel, the roof decking. You start seeing the roofing come along. Now, it's starting to turn white, all the roof coming along the B and C wing. Now, the CTE wing in February, March of '24. You can really see it transforming month to month and now April of '24. So, that's a nice timestamp going through the last six months. Work accomplished. So, you know, just general update on, you know, 68% of our cost of work budget has been awarded to local contractors. That's been holding steady. We're very proud of that stat. We pride ourselves on surrounding ourselves with good trade partners and local trade partners and giving back to the community and using the resources here in the community. So, we're very proud of that on a project of this size to have that much local participation. Update, 42% of work completed and built to date. So, we're just over that halfway mark. That's a huge kind of milestone. Once you get to that halfway point, the final half goes by very fast. So, that's a good mile marker there. And 54% of the project budget, or its project schedule has been completed to date. Some of the things that Andrew went over in the drone footage, just big milestones that we've done. We just finished the roofing. So, all the roofing's 100% complete as of a week, week and a half ago. So, huge milestone, getting your heads dried in. That starts releasing interior walls, interior sheet rock, interior gypsealants, ceiling grid, all that good stuff. It's a huge milestone. Glazing, so now, your head's dried in. Now, we're drying in the exterior faces of the building. So, glazing is completely 95, 98% done in the first two big quadrants. And as you saw, we're rounding the corner in that last quadrant, the CTE wing. And it's mostly glazed out. Those big windows that you saw in the drone footage at the weight room, it's a beautiful view of that Paul Tyson Field. It's so nice. It's such a good view. It's like, just, I can't wait to see them to run there, working out in that weight room, looking out in that field. It's like the Field of Dreams right there, looking out from that weight room. It's so cool. And then, just the facades. I mean, we're, you know, we're 95 to 100% complete in the majority of the areas. And we're rounding that corner around the CTE wing, making a lot of headway with that. And then, just a lot of BIM coordination goes on the front end to work on space management so that we visually in 3D building information model, we build and do class detections of all the mechanical, electrical plumbing systems above ceilings to make sure it's gonna fit before we build it. And so, we had finished that up December, January. And now, it's just all being put in place above ceiling. So, that's another huge milestone to be done in pre-planning so that we build it once the right way. So, achievements. You know, one of the biggest recent challenges that we're, have overcame and working on overcoming and working on overcoming is just the tight constraints next to that existing school. It's something we all knew was always going to be there, and it was going to be one of the more challenging things to do and navigate, and we're there. So you could see in the drone footage, all the facades, and you can see in the picture right there, that scaffolding, and that's the fence right there, and there's the school. It's just wide enough for a guy to walk through. And, you know, there's sky tracks we have to bring around the corners, you can kind of see in that dark photo, up top of that side track, trying to work through there, next to that existing building and the scaffolding. You can see in this photo of the aerial view just how tight it is right there, some spaces are 18 to 22 foot space, and that scaffolding's about eight to 10 foot wide, and you have a sky track that's six, seven foot wide trying to go through there, and then you're trying to keep a security fence up on that existing school away from us, so that is truly the biggest challenge we're overcoming right now, and we're working around the corner and getting through it. And so we're really excited about turning that corner, getting this part of this scope of work done, and really just, you know, keeping in mind protecting the security and safety of the students has really been, you know, front and center on everything we do. So there's a lot of flagging and repairs to fencing and upkeep that we do on a daily basis over there to keep that area secured, keep the students separated from us, you know, flagging people in and out, moving fence, moving fence, putting it back and keeping that area secured. You know, also during this big push around this corner is perfect timing, right? Testing, so all of the testing dates have fallen right during this time that we're trying to make this corner, and so trying to be mindful of keeping the noises down while they're testing, you know, 20 foot away from us in these classrooms, and our trade partners and ourselves have done a great job, I don't think I've gotten one complaint telling us to keep it down, which is phenomenal with the amount of heavy construction we're doing that's close to the existing building. So we aren't there yet, but we're turning the corner, and I'm really proud of what we've done so far as a team with that tight constraint. Engagements, Ali.
One of the measures of success for this project, and really any project to us as a team, is the engagement and the level of engagement that we've been able to have with the community and the students and staff at Waco High School. Even since the last time we spoke to y'all in October, we've had the chance to have our students out twice, we've been able to take them on job site tours at this point, and get to show them what you've got to see, Mr. Patton, who alluded to. We got to have the Waco Education Board out just this past week on Monday. We were able to celebrate our topping out, which I believe most if not all of you were able to be a part of in December, which is a huge milestone for us with the community as well. We had a celebration with the staff separately on that, and we were able to have a raffle and make sure that they were involved and that this is a celebration for them as well. We also got to be a part of both O'Connell and us at RO, we got to be a part of the celebrity cook-off, one of the fundraiders, excuse me, for Waco High, and that was just a fun event, we got to be a part of all of Waco High, Steve Grohl, and support all the members here. And of course, one, our biggest, our biggest pride is being able to work with these students, you know, tomorrow, we're actually setting up a table at the Guam Career Fair, and getting to speak to those students there who may be interested in trades and something different than maybe the traditional route of college, or getting their hands-on experience, and we really want to inspire them in that way. We know that, you know, Waco High is one of the two high schools here in town, and the honor of being able to interact and hopefully inspire these kids is an honor that's not lost on us, so we got to take those kids out and show them, again, hands-on experience about what their school and what their future will look like, and those kids are, it's hard to describe just how proud that makes us, of course, but to see the smiles on their faces, take them up on the catwalks, show them exactly where they'll get to practice in band or do some studies in their science labs, and so we're really blessed to have been a part of that and be able to be involved with our community in some ways, and throughout the project, we hope we can find more.
Absolutely. Ali, thank you for that, and, you know, I think that's probably one of the most rewarding things that we have in our profession, is when we have these students and kids and these engagements, and they're asking questions, they're smiling, we, hey, you want to take some selfies, here's a good spot right here, they start taking selfies, grinning ear to ear, it's really rewarding. And, I mean, there's not an event that I go to in Waco, whether on my personal side or business side, where there's a big gathering of people and they find out I'm working at Waco High School, and they're like, oh, I'm a teacher at Waco High School, or I do this, or I did that, and there's so, there's just so much excitement in this community about Waco High School, and it's so rewarding, kind of keeps us going, keeps Jesus flowing, and keep us pushing forward, so we love that aspect of that. Upcoming work, so this is just an overview, milestone schedule, we are, you know, in the middle, really over the halfway point of the current big phase one and two, and we just have one phase left, so we're less than a year away from turning over the main new campus, a new building, so really exciting times, and, you know, then we'll transition to that, that last final phase of demolishing the existing campus, finishing the practice fields, the tennis courts, the paving, the drives, the parking lots, with that final turnover still tracking there towards mid to end of December, complete, completion of the project. You know, some of the milestone dates we're tracking coming up is building dry-in, which were already dried in, two of the three big quadrants, and working on that third quadrant right now, power ons coming somewhere early June, right now, you know, there's two big main electrical distribution rooms that feed that entire building, and then air on early August, those are huge milestone dates that we're tracking right now and trending, yes. Something else that you'll see transform over the summer is the site, the site works, so we're going to start pushing forward with prep of the final permanent fire lanes, paving the fire lanes, curbing gutters, exterior sidewalks, take advantage of the good summer weather, the dry weather to get all this paving and sidewalks done, so that going into the next wet season of the fall, we have good permanent paved roads for access to the building, paved walkways for access in the building to minimize tracking dirt, debris, and things into the building. So when a lot of y'all come back from the summer break for the fall, you're going to see a transformed site too, so excited about that. Those are just updates on overall activities that we've already got over. Any questions?
I just want to thank you for that, I think just the commitment that you guys have had to getting kind of local contractors, trade partners, I think is very commendable, and I really want to thank you for that, and just the amount of work that has been going on. I mean, my daughter who just turned six, we pass by Waco High, and every day she looks at it to see the new stuff that has been there, and she's told me, Mama, you know, see that building right there? That's Waco High School, which I thought was kind of funny, I was like, you're right, that is Waco High School, and it's just, it's really, I think you had referenced the excitement, and it is palpable. I mean, even my six-year-old little, my daughter who's in elementary school is so excited about Waco High getting done, and she's excited to go there one day, so just thank you so much for that, it's just been, it's been a joy to watch, and you guys are working fast and furious for sure, you've got a lot done in a little bit of time, so really appreciate it.
I have to say, after leaving the tour this past week, I actually was really proud that I'm a taxpayer, who rarely happens, but I was thrilled, and I was on fire. This is going to make such a tremendous impact for our district, and you guys have been there and just pulling it through, and it really is exciting for this community, and will be, once it's open, it's going to be state-of-the-art, it's going to be so incredible for our kids, so thank you for your hard work.
We're excited to see the continued progress. Thank you guys so much for coming and presenting, appreciate it. Okay, moving on to review, discuss master schedule change for secondary schools, Dr. Cornblum.
Good evening, Madam President, Dr. McKinnon and trustees, so I know that you guys have heard a lot about the master schedule change, so we're here to talk with you about this tonight, so. So we're going to go over the, kind of the basis for the change, why, how this, and why this all came about, and then Mr. Hamilton's going to go into kind of the nuts and bolts of the schedule, and how the schedule will look at both middle school and high school. So this actually all started back in 2021 with the passing of HB 1525, and so HB 1525 brought in weighted tiered funding for CTE classes, and so basically what happens with that is there are three different levels of CTE classes, more advanced classes received higher weighting, and a multiplier on our funding. Along with that came kind of an ambiguous requirement at the time, they talked about an average of 45 minutes per class, but then also they talked about 8100 minutes total. Well, that didn't quite work because four districts that were in a four-day school week now, some districts went to that. So depending on your calendar, it was impossible to get 8100 minutes, so they didn't actually put this into effect for us at the time, so we kind of got a reprieve while they figured those things out. And so HB 1416, I'll talk more about that top part in a little bit, but HB 1416 also came about, which is the revision to HB 4545, if you remember, which were the required intervention for students who had failed a STAR test or an EOC. And so those students are required to have a certain number of minutes of intervention, and at first, it was for every test, and that was near too impossible, because it cannot be a part of their regular course, it has to be outside of, so if you think about that for all five tests at the high school level, that's just not really possible, so, and then, you know, to your elementary level, it was just across the board. So they revised that, and so now we focus on math and reading, but it's still, for our students, we have found that we need to fit that within our school day. At first, we tried tutoring before school or after school, and we just weren't successful at getting our students to all come, so that we were in compliance with that in Saturday school, so we decided that it had to be within the day, and so that's where our win time came about. So you've probably heard us talk about win, Ms. Parnell has been up several times presenting on win and intervention, and so that's where that came in, so that put us having that extra, usually around 30 minutes within the day for intervention, built in to all of our campus schedules, elementary all the way up through high school. But all of those things then make scheduling difficult to get in all of the required minutes that are on top of everything else, you know, that TEA requires, so that was kind of the dilemma, but this is why it's very important to us. So when we look at our, the weighted funding for CTE, I was reading something from TEA, and they said that districts receive 10 to 47% more funding for full-time equivalent CTE students than for regular students. And so we have, let's see, about 8,150 course requests for CTE courses, so if you think about that weighted funding on every course, it makes a difference, and for us, that's about 3.2 million dollars, and so that's a significant amount of funding that we get added to our budget for CTE courses. And the thing with this legislation is if any course, they've course corrected now, TEA has, and so what the law is now is that all courses have to be an average of 45 minutes based on the number of days you're in school, in attendance, so not the 8100 any longer, but as they figured that out, we've kind of been given waivers, if you will, until it actually got solidified. So they've updated now the student attendance accounting handbook for us, and the guidelines are in there. And so even though we've known this was coming, we've kind of had some breaks to figure it out. So that brought us to where we are, to, we have to figure this out, because if one class doesn't equal 45 minutes, we would lose all of our funding, not just the funding for that class, but all funding, and so that's why it's so important. And of course, we need to be able to get our intervention time in. So currently, we're on an eight-period day, and like I said, we have to add our win time in, which is our intervention time in, and that's difficult at middle school and high school to get all of that in plus this, and so we do have 45 minutes per class right now, but if you have a pep rally, an assembly, any of those types of things, half-days, they count against your minutes. So you have to bank some extra minutes to account for the extra things that you want to do. So although we did have 45, if you took those things out, then fire drills, all of those things, it would, it would hurt us, and so we wouldn't make it there. So the other thing, well, let me go to the next slide on this, talk to you about that. So the other thing was, as we considered different options, was to look at a seven-period day. If we went to a seven-period day, which some school districts do, that would allow us to have classes longer, but it would also take away electives from our students, so students would lose about 30% of their elective choice, so, because they wouldn't have that extra class to take an elective. And if they were a student who, let's say, hadn't passed an EOC, and what we call our tier-three students in high school, if you remember, we added those interventionists at high school, at freshman and sophomore for math and reading, so they're like in an extra reading class for intervention, that becomes an elective, so basically, they would have an elective, and so we don't want to do that, because we know for a lot of students, whatever they're in, football, band, fine arts, that's their passion, and for some students, that's why they come to school. So that was problematic, we definitely didn't want to look, to go that route. So we toyed with looking at some things, and so what we landed upon after much consultation with many people, so we had a committee of teachers, counselors, administrators, just different folks across the district who are involved in this from middle school to high school, and we just started looking at different options, and so we landed on a block schedule basically, on an AB block schedule, you have some classes that are 95 minutes, but then you do have classes that happen, those classes are every other day classes, and then you do have classes, some that are every day, like your athletics, and they would be about 45 minutes a day. And so that's what we've landed on, and that allows us to still stay on eight periods, students don't lose electives, we meet our minutes, so we're, all classes are over 45 minutes, they're 46 to 47 minutes, which banks enough extra minutes, and it still allows us to get in our intervention time. So all of those things are able to happen or are corrected if we run a schedule like this. So I'm going to let Mr. Hamilton talk to you about the nuts and bolts of the schedule.
Good evening, so this is basically the middle school schedule for 2324, what we currently run. As you can see, we have a traditional eight-period day, but we've also included a period that is the same length as the other periods as an intervention period, so it allowed a little bit of flexibility of where win time was in middle school this year. We had to do that to accommodate some things in regards to, going back to what Dr. Cornblum said about ensuring kids have options for electives, kids that failed two STAR exams in middle school would have very limited amount of electives if we did not go to sort of this free-floating win time period this past year. So this was the schedule, 45 minutes apiece, with lunch periods being sort of a triple-track schedule, so there are issues that came along with having that triple-track schedule too that caused issues with scheduling, but it was the way that we could get everything to work. So moving to the 2425 middle school schedule, this is what it would look like, first and last period, so first and eighth period would be daily for 48 minutes apiece, that allows us to get the CTE classes into those periods, to maintain funding in those areas as well. The middle three classes of the day, second on A-Day, third and fourth are 95-minute classes, so you can see in the middle of the day, you have this lunch period amalgamation, I don't know what else you want to call it, but the positive of this is it allows us not to have that triple-track system, so scheduling is a lot easier, so we end up with the three lunches that go through, which is what we need for the middle schools, is three lunches, we can't go to two, would love to, it'd make scheduling easier, but we cannot because of capacity. So you see that that's the middle of the day, and then we have win that's attached to the end of third period, and the kids can alternate between And the kids can alternate between win A and win B, which gives us some benefits. This past year, we had to have it just because of how the schedules worked, where kids would be in win period for reading all first semester and then math for second semester, which if I'm a kid that's retaking math at semester at the high school, which we'll talk about in a minute, or I need both, whatever it is, it's going to be better for them to get it throughout the year as opposed to one big swoop and then the next semester, one another big swoop. So even though there's some problems that come with block scheduling, this is some advantages that came out of it. This was, as Dr. Cornblum said, we went through many iterations all the way up to and after we met with teachers to go over the schedule. So we did take input from staff as we presented this and incorporated that because this schedule is completely different from what it looked like when we started. So we wanted to make sure we honored that and people had some great ideas which were able to be incorporated. High school schedule, this is different. I'm going to preface it, the differences really come from a couple of things. One is transportation. We have Guaca, Guam, and P-Tech, which require transportation in the middle of the day. So that creates issues in creating a first-last-period block, if you will. This is the schedule that we had this year, which was eight periods with win. As you could see, it was 45 minutes and then ran through with a sort of, again, fifth period that's all over the place with lunches and such. The new schedule is, first period is a block schedule or a block period of 95 minutes. Second period is as well. Then we move into the lunch period, which we had to push short of win time and lunch into. We are working through and I believe we can get to where the kids still have differentiated win times so that we can still be more prescriptive in what the students receive during those times. Courtney Parnell and Patrick Ullmore are working through that. We move into, so that third period, as you could see, is a daily class. It happens every day. It is a 48-minute period that is attached to that lunch and win time. We go into fourth period, which is also a 95-minute block, and we end the day with an eighth period, which is daily. So that sort of same schedule is below, but with different periods, fifth, sixth, third again, seventh, and eighth. So the win time and the lunches are set up as such because of the transportation between the off-site campuses. So that's really sort of the crux of the schedule. And then additional context, A-B block schedule days are planned out. We have put together what every day of the school year looks like, be it an A-Day or a B-Day. We also have C-days for what I call wonky days, like testing days and such. That allows us to not ever have an A-Day, a wonky day, and then another A-Day. So kids are seen more regularly by their, their teachers. Those will be all laid out and given to the staff so they understand that and are able to play it out. We will also have half-days, which again are scheduled and we have those put together as well. So they'll have that for the entirety of the year, including high school final schedules. Everyone loves finals. All schools, secondary schools will have a modified A-B block schedule, except for Lake Air, which is in a different situation because it is a pre-K through eighth Montessori school. So their schedule will not change in regards to how they run. They don't have CTE courses, and even if they did have CTE courses, they're a longer period because of how they're structured. And as you noted, there are two periods that occur daily at 48 minutes apiece. I'm going to turn it back over to Dr. Cornblum to discuss what this looks like from the instructional standpoint.
So this is just an example of literacy, but one of the things that came up, you know, our elementary teachers are very versed in teaching kids for longer periods of time. But if you're a secondary teacher and you're used to having your kids for 45 minutes and now suddenly you're going to have them for 95 minutes, what do I do with the 95 block minute of time? That doesn't just mean I teach two lessons, right? We structure that time differently so that we can go deeper with our learning. We can do some small group work, different things like that. We asked them what they needed in terms of support as we made this transition into this. And so they, they mentioned having some professional development over how to use that 95 minutes, you know, effectively. And so we met not too long ago with a group. And so they were, they were talking about, well, could we do it on, you know, those comp days, right? And I said, okay, I'm going to play devil's advocate. I said, we said those are comp days and you've taken all of this professional development to comp out. And now we say we're going to have training on these comp days. I said, that's not going to go over very well. And they said, well, you could make it not required, just for teachers who wanted to do it because we would do it because we would want to get ahead. So I don't know if we will do that or not, but they brought that up. Because they are, you know, many are eager to learn. I'm sure that, that we do have some who are apprehensive, you know, as well, but they are. And their take on it is that they want to learn enough in advance so that they can begin planning by thinking about that, you know, not. So we'll try, looking at structuring, I don't know if we'll do it on the comp days. But you know, over summer, there will be for late hires and for people who just couldn't come. You know, it will be closer to school or when teachers get back. But you know, if they couldn't come, that's, that's fine. We'll still offer it, it just won't be, the lead time won't be there. So this is just an example of what a literacy, you know, block might look like. Our middle schools were already double-blocked for ELA, so they're used to doing this. And this is kind of how their blocks look. And so we'll just be filtering that through all courses. So yeah, there's a focus on that. The only other thing I do want to bring up, just to be transparent because you might hear it, is if I'm a teacher and I teach a 95-minute block, but then I also have a 45-minute block, I have to plan differently, right, within maybe one lesson plan. And that might come, come up. We're trying very hard to be mindful of what classes we put in those situations so as to try to release, lessen the load on the core teachers in those areas. It may not be always possible, so I don't want to stand here and say that that will never happen, but really trying to, it's, you know, it's a, it's a puzzle, right? Really trying to fit them together to help teachers as much as we can not have to do that who are in those, you know, really heavy classes. But again, I'm not saying that it will never happen, but that is, we're aware and we're looking at it. So that is all. We have been giving this QR code to our teachers for feedback that they can tell us, you know, whatever they want to tell us, what supports they need and whatnot. So that's been out through the, you know, all of these sessions and things that we've been doing. So what questions do you have?
Mr. Patton, thank you. I saw him writing down his notes, thinking thoughtfully about them. Thank you, Mr. Patton.
I'm trying to play so nice tonight. Okay. First is a comment that this is, I know you guys put so much thought into this and wow. As a, as a student, I would love the ELA block. I love to read. I love people leave me alone, let me read. That would be great. Math, 95 minutes would be pure torture for me. And having been a math teacher at a time, I think teaching math is, for 95 minutes, is going to be really challenging. And I think there's going to need to be some support there because you can do only so many examples. And then for 95 minutes, you've got kids, once they've done their homework, staring at you.
So yeah, you're right. And so what it affords the teacher the opportunity to do, but they haven't been used to doing this, right? In 45 minutes, you just can't. But is to, there could be more group work. The teacher can work with small groups more for really focusing on areas where students might not be understanding and correct things in the moment before we get, you know, too far out. So there's a lot of opportunity there. But with that said, we, we know that. And so we have reached out to an outside consultant who specializes in this. And so we're trying to arrange them for our training around that. So not just how to use 95 minutes, but for certain courses, very tailored training for that 95 minutes, based on what they teach.
So speaking for mathematics, will we allow our faculty to do some tutoring, individual tutoring during that time? I mean, is that a possibility while they're, while kids are finishing their work? I know that you could do small group, but will we allow them also or encourage them to work individually with some kids that are struggling at that time?
I mean, if the children are in their class, then sure. I mean, I think it's like, when I taught ELA, right? If I had students who were struggling with a similar thing, then I would call them back and work on those things with them because they had similar needs. But if I had a student who was way off and didn't fit, right? I can't just pull them along with that group because their needs different, you know? And so I would work with them, you know, as needed individually to meet their needs.
That's where I think the 95 minutes for mathematics would be helpful for a kid who's totally lost on, you know, linear algebra. And that would give you some, give the educator some time to work. What are the periods for athletics and fine arts built into your schedule? What periods are those?
So athletics at the high school level are third and eighth period, which are the daily periods of 48 minutes apiece. At the middle school, it is first and last, which are also the 48 minutes apiece. Fine arts, we worked with, is it last week? Yes, last week. And a couple of weeks ago, or maybe was last week too. Everything kind of runs together. And so we have an exercise we do every year where we do pre-placements, anything. So we could look at the whole schedule and fine arts comes together as a group. And we look at, okay, what's best for fine arts, this particular course? This needs to be during this period. This needs to be during this period. And then maybe this fine arts course doesn't need to be during this period. It can free-flow, if that makes sense.
So high school, third and eighth period are athletics and most likely where?
We have some band courses that are within that third and eighth period, but some other band courses because obviously there are multitude of different types of bands, jazz, mariachi. Those are, could be placed in other areas throughout, throughout the day.
I only see third and eighth period as the times that are.
Correct, those are the daily ones, but they may have a band class, like a jazz band that's placed during a 95-minute block every other day.
So CTE also will be third through eight, a third and eighth period?
CTE could be any period of the day because we've made it where it averages out to 46 to 47 minutes throughout the entirety of the year.
Okay. Can I ask a question about your previous question?
Sure.
Or make a comment. I was in the opposite place. You could have put me in ELA for 15 minutes. I was done. Right. You put me in math for two hours and I'm soaking it up. So first, it averages out, you know? It's going to be a struggle. I remember going to college and we had an hour and a half class. And it was hard my first, first semester, really. And it's going to take learning, but if anything, this is going to prepare them for college because this is exactly what happens when they get there.
One thing I would note that came out in, in focus groups when we did this was the advantage to students is you don't have as many classes of homework daily. So you're not, I mean, if you think about it, going back to the student perspective, I'm a student that went through eight periods of class today. And maybe this is the day everyone assigned homework. Because I have a lot of AP classes and dual-credit. And so I'm feeling really happy at the end of the day that I get to go home and slug all that out after doing football practice.
I have one more comment.
Yes, Mr. Patton, no. Please.
I'm concerned, looking at the middle school schedule, that you have a four-minute passing period.
We run on a four-minute passing period right now in middle school.
I'm concerned about that. I've been in the middle schools during passing periods. And I like to think I'm taller than a lot of those sixth, seventh, and eighth graders, and I'm not.
I am not either, Mr. Patton.
And, and it is wild in, in between classes, getting to them. And I'm just thinking of the new schools that we're building, the new Carver, the new Tennyson, and how large those buildings are. I'm concerned that four minutes is not enough time for safe passage from one end of the school to the other. And that's all I need to say.
Thank you. Is there any more discussion, questions? Yeah, Mr. Ochoa.
Can I just say?
Well, Mr. Ochoa, and then we'll come back to you.
Okay, all I was going to say is I'm delighted that you don't have a 10:50 lunch anymore. I'm serious. You moved to 11:30 for high school. I remember being eaten at that early time and by 2 o'clock, you were gone. And to me, this will affect a student's ability to be attentive at the end of the day. So thank you for that.
That was a lot of the feedback we got from the beginning. As I said, the first schedule did not look like the last schedule.
Yeah.
Mr. Ochoa.
This is scary because it's new. I think when I first started at AJ Moore, we had block schedule. And I loved it, even as a new teacher. Plus you had less passing periods, which is a great thing. So one of my questions is, we're trying to get, you're trying to bank minutes. And this schedule allows for an extra 450 minutes, is that right?
It allows up to, it's, I base that upon 180 days. We actually have 168, so it's a little bit less than 450 minutes, but it works out.
Would, would it hypothetically work just to add two days at the end of the school year?
It doesn't work to do that because it's based upon the average of 45 minutes in each class for every day that kids are in school. So no matter what you do, like, like the days that we don't go to school, the PD days, those don't count.
You could extend the school day.
You could extend the school day. That's the only thing you could do.
I don't think that would be too popular.
We would have to do approximately 25 minutes of extension in the day.
Yeah, that wouldn't work. My other question, this is just a weird question, does win have to go there?
For which?
Well, for either, it just, to me, you know, if a student's, a majority of our kids are leaving at the end of the day for sports or, you know, whatever they're involved in, would it be better to move win before eighth period? That way they're missing win and not so much of fourth period?
Yes, because you were and I.
We could. But for the kids where those minutes are required, we would be out of compliance if they didn't get their minutes in, possibly, depending on how much they missed for sports. Which I see what you're saying, that makes sense. They wouldn't miss a core or an academic, you know, heavy class, it would be win. But then remember for HB 1516, they have to get a certain amount of time in for the remediation if they have failed a course. Now there are kids, everybody goes to win for something. So not all kids are in it for remediation. So it would, we bank extra minutes for win. However, depending, you know, on sports and how many sports they're in and how many things, they could miss more than allowed. Possibly.
Leave campus in the morning or during midday?
I don't know.
So, okay, so we've set up the schedule because I, that's a different, I've got it. And so it'll be tight. But basically, they would leave campus in the morning from their home campus if they're transporting by bus. And they would get there approximately 8:30. And so we would run 95 minutes there as well because there are CTE courses. I'm sorry. They were 90-minute courses this past year, but. So we'd run those and then during midday, they would come back to campus. Or if they were at home campus, they would obviously go over there. It works out time-wise. The concession we had to make in order for students that are at Guaca, Guam, or P-Tech in the morning to get back to home campus to be able to go to class is they'll have a grab-and-go lunch that is provided and worked, we've worked out with Cliff Reese. So.
Last, last one. So if a student misses one block schedule class, as far as making up hours, they have to go make that full-time up?
Yeah, so you know, it's, it's six and one half and does another type of thing. If I miss a day of class, I miss those five classes in this case. Whereas in the old case, you'd miss eight. So, but in this case, it's a longer time that you're missing in each class, but you're not missing necessarily all your classes. So it's a, like I said, six and one half a dozen the other. It's just they're going to have to make up more time in those particular classes.
Can I ask a dumb question?
Hold on one second, Mr. Gill, or Ms. Ochoa? Mr. Hillary, did you have? Okay, Mr. Gill, and then we'll go to you, Mr. Grant.
This may be a different conversation, but talking about Guaca and Guam, going off campus with the big, beautiful campuses that we're building, that we thought about moving those onto campus.
I'm going to defer to Dr. Kinkanen on that.
I'm talking about budget, buses.
Yeah. It's a really great point and I really appreciate you asking that question because that, that is a decision that has to be made in the future.
because that, that is a decision that has to be made in the future. Um, funding, right? I would put funding, funding, transportation, lots of issues there. Um, and I, I would like to visit with the board about, about that for the future. Guam is a little trickier in terms of moving it back to the home campus because it is, we have the shops there. And we didn't build the shops in the new high school. Um, we don't have those at university as well. So, um, we would have to include that with any, if we have any remaining bond funds, which we won't know for a long time, for a good while, or in a future bond program. You'd have to prepare for that. To make that change with Guam, Guaca would be easy to move back to the home campuses and could be done really quickly. So, um, and I think, you know, I think at some point it's a really good idea, be really honest and transparent about that. Because we, it's, it's, we have additional staffing there to support that where it could be supported, those classrooms right on the main campuses. So I would, you know, we're closing Brazos this year. We're, um, closing Alta Vista when we open the two new elementary schools. When we do our, when we have our attendance boundary conversations, we need to talk about elementary schools, some of those smaller elementary schools. And then we need to probably talk about Guaca first and then start planning for, um, Guam for the future, if that's the desire of the board, um, in the community. So, um, thank you for that question.
Mr. Grant, sorry.
So, uh, classes that are 47 minutes, uh, your teacher has energy for 47 minutes, your student has energy. And so that whole time is teaching, right? And you, and, and then you come back the next day, you have another 47 minutes. So both of those times are taught in fairly rigorous teaching. If you combine those times and the teacher is worn out by minute 60, and so we start doing some more relational kind of things, do you lose the things that you can teach? I mean, because you were teaching for 45 plus 45, but now you're teaching for about 60 and the rest is?
I think it really comes down to pacing and structure of the class, which is one of the things that we do need to give professional development on. So a, as Dr. Cornbloom said, you can't take, like you said, the 45 minutes and just put it together. There's gotta be a real thought process about, um, downtimes during the class. And I don't mean like, okay, go ahead and take a nap. It's more like brain breaks. It's changing what the activities are, thinking about what's the lift of the students as opposed to necessarily the teacher. And really structuring it in that way. And I think it was really well put out, put, put together in regards to the small group versus individual versus whole group. What does that look like? And so those are the pieces that have to go into providing training to teachers to be able to do that as opposed to running the sprint, they're running the marathon, if that analogy works.
In elementary, for example, in elementary, um, let's take an ELA. So if I'm an ELA teacher and I teach ELA social studies, they're encouraged, depending on their master's schedule, to have 130 to 150 minutes of ELA. Now that's reading, writing, language, word study, you know, the three different frameworks, but blended in within that time. And I, and I taught that way and I never felt like I had enough time. But as an elementary teacher, that's what I was used to, right? That's how we taught. That's what we did. So it's different for high school. And so teaching them how to do that and how to use that time effectively. It, I mean, it is like, um, Mr. Hamilton said, that's going to be imperative. But like you see this instructional framework here, we want to do the same for each area. So what would your day possibly, or your block rather, possibly look like based on your subject? To give them some guidance around that to go with their professional development. That doesn't mean they couldn't, you know, alter it some depending on what was happening in the class. But, um, like in our elementary class, your, your time is kind of like that. Like your mini lesson is 15, 15 minutes. And then, you know, going on down to kind of break out that whole block of time into all the sections. So that's something that we want to work through with our high school courses as well.
Mr. Ochoa.
I again, I, I love teaching in a block schedule, uh, but I worked right next door to people who couldn't stand it. My, my hope is that next year, uh, whoever's in charge of lesson planning allows a lot of grace. With all the teachers knowing that we're going through something completely new. Because I know it's gonna be difficult by itself.
There's going to be grace, a lot of support, a lot of coaching, um, probably modeling, you know, just different, different things. And I assume, just thinking ahead, that we are going to have teachers when they get into it, who are going to be stressed and who are, you know, until we get the hang of it. So I'm anticipating that. So just telling you all so you can anticipate that as well. But like you said, working through, supporting them, help, helping them, you know, because each campus, remember, they have instructional specialists and different folks on campus to help them in different areas. And then, you know, they need to also tell us if they need something, need more support, need more training, need something that we haven't provided, they need to tell us. We need to hear from that so that we can provide. But we're out on campuses a lot too and in classrooms as a team as well. So we will ask.
Okay. Dr. Kinkanen?
Oh, I, um, I just wanted to say that this is something that can be changed every year. If it doesn't work out, we can, we can find another way to do it. And that's happened in the history of schools, right? We've always adapting and adjusting. So, um, I know one school district that changed their schedule this year for the CTE minutes. They're changing it again next year. So, um, we'll have to see what works and what doesn't work and we'll, we'll likely have some tweaks.
Well, and I do want to, cause you might hear this, you know, someone brought up, well, why can't we do it like this district? They have an eight-period day. And for us, it's big, we have to get our Wynn time. We have to get our intervention time in the day. We can't get all of our kids that intervention they need before school or after school with tutoring. Because right now, the number of students who need touches, but then also, um, just not attending.
And we've done some other really nice things with Wynn. That's, we have.
Oh, yeah.
Superintendent scholars during that time. And we have some really nice things that we're doing with students during that Wynn time for kids who don't need remediation. And it has been beneficial. And Courtney and, um, Dr. Cornbloom have been really massaging that. And that's been working really well for us. We don't want to lose that.
Who was it the other day who said something? The TSI math scores are up.
Yes, yes.
Well, there's, there's a Wynn period, you know, within that or class where they're focusing on getting their TSI score to pass. So lots of different things happening. Um, but we also have a Wynn stakeholder group that Ms. Parnell's running. Not to change the Wynn time, but to ask even how to make that work better as well.
Mr. Davis?
I think my question is kind of piggybacking on Trustee's Patton's concern earlier about the four-minute time block. How are we assessing that with the new schools? Cause I remember in high school having four-minute passing periods. And I had to go from one end all the way to the other end. And it was like a band class. I had to get my horn out before the bell rung. And I'm just wondering, are we assessing kind of the new distances that students will have to go?
So I, I think a couple of things from that. Um, the new schools are large, but I look at like Tennyson. Tennyson is spread out and has buildings everywhere and it's portable village, right? And so that creates its issue in regards to getting from one end of the building to the other. When you think about how Carver is and how Tennyson will be, and really to a certain extent, how Chavez is because it's somewhat the same sort of setup, right? Where you have all of your academic wings on this one end and then athletics, fine arts, all the, on the other end, same, same sort of deal. You have most of your classes for the kiddos are gonna be happening within that academic area where it should be, if you are moving quickly, you will get from one class to the other. The other part that I think is different from when you and I may have been in school, I know definitely when I was in school is kids don't really use lockers like they used to, which that, I, again, a four-minute passing period, trying to change out books in a locker, yeah, I don't think that's gonna happen. But with the fact that you're not doing that, lockers really are confined to your band halls and your, your locker rooms now for, um, cheer and athletics. And so I think what you see is kids can move that if they move that. I see many times in middle schools, if they're not making it in four minutes, it's not because it's not enough time. They're just not moving. They're social.
I, uh, I want to thank you for that because I know that, um, really listening to people and kind of adjusting according to needs and ideas is so important. Um, we, so I want to commend you guys for, um, kind of mining the goal that we have in our own, already in our own teaching staff and administration. I think, um, just, uh, two comments first, you know, I do think that what Mr. Ochoa said is correct. I mean, when I look at 90 minutes to teach something, I think, oh, I can totally do that. I would totally be able to do it and love it and like plan. But I do think if it's something new for teachers, this is gonna have to be a really big grace period for a lot of these teachers as they learn it. But then the important component of that is the training, you know, being able to see it kind of in action and what that looks like and kind of timestamps on that is, I think, gonna be important for a lot of the teachers who are, have a little bit of anxiety about this schedule. And the second question that I had was, do we know how many teachers in our current system have already taught in a block schedule?
I don't really have an exact number. I know that pretty much every campus I went to, to discuss this, there were people that had taught in block. Some liked it, some did not. Um, so it really just came down to, I think it goes back to what you said, preference. Um, and, and anxiety if you haven't done it before. So I think that's our, our job to make sure that we do the best job we can to like, as you say, give grace, but give support. I mean, it's, it's great to give, give grace, but if we don't give help, then.
Yep, training's key.
We gotta do the help part too.
The, yeah, my, my only thought was that is if you did have some kind of vet teachers who knew how to do the block scheduling, maybe help kind of establish some type of mentoring.
We can definitely look at bringing a group together that can help give some insight and some maybe tips and tricks of the trade. I think that would be very beneficial because again, we have folks across the campuses that have done that. Obviously we have a board member that was a teacher that did that. And maybe we can, uh, gather him into that tips and tricks of the trade. No?
I'll volunteer a lot of old AJ Moore folks who are at university.
Okay, that's very nice of you.
You're kind.
So yes, I think that'd be a great thing to do to be able to bring sort of that wisdom together.
That's perfect. Okay. Well, thank you all. Appreciate all the hard work.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to item number 10, review discuss report, board member continuing education. I have a statement here I must read. I, board president, am required to announce the name of each member who wa, who as of that member's anniversary of the election or the appointment to the board, uh, has completed the required continuing education, has exceeded the required continuing education, and is deficient in meeting the required continuing education. I do want to preface it that deficient might be just one little like block. I'm also required to announce that completing the required continuing education is a basic obligation and expectation of any sitting board member under the State Board of Education rule. Waco ISD board members Stephanie Cordewig, Jose Vedania, Keith Gilery, Angelo Ochoa, Jonathan Grant and Jim Patton have completed and exceeded the required continuing education. Jeremy Davis has completed almost all of the continued, all of the required continuing education, but is deficient in meeting all of the required continuing education. Kind of redone it there. But he does have plans to take that one little course in the summer conference in June. Okay, and moving on to item number 11, announcements.
Good evening, President Cordewig, Dr. Kinkanen, trustees. It's exciting to be standing before you in April, almost the end of April, and I'm talking about a playoff game. Do you have an update for us, Coach Love? UHS softball is, is in game one in College Station tonight. Have you heard? Nothing, not, we don't have an update yet, but tomorrow night, you can check out our UHS softball team in action for game two and three if needed. Um, first pitch will be thrown at 5:00 PM at the Waco ISD complex, stadium complex softball field. So come out and support. Congratulations to another UHS team making it into the playoffs and a girls' team at that, Dr. Kinkanen.
I'm watching.
Yep, girl's sports.
Watching the girls.
Everybody's watching girl's sports right now. The Clayton Clark, Caitlin Clark, yes. Early voting started Monday and continues through April 30th for the May 4th election. During early voting, registered voters may vote at any of the five early voting sites that are listed on our website. And on election day, registered voters may vote at any of the county's numerous voting centers. More information is available again on our website about all the election information, www.wacoisd.org/elections. Um, May 14th, we will see you all again here briefly, very briefly, um, for a special meeting at noon to canvass the election. We also currently still have a May 15th intergovernmental, um, meeting on the calendar with the city. Stay tuned for more information on that. And our next regular meeting will be May 16th. It's a pretty quick turnaround to that. When I stand before you in May, I'll be talking a lot about our celebrations for the class of 2024. Graduation is four weeks away. Um, so tonight I want to take a moment to tell you about the staff celebrations and recognition. As Dr. Kinkanen said, thank you to all of those that were able to join, um, the prize patrol, um, visits that we did for TIA. If you haven't, um, seen the photos of those presentations, be sure to check out the district's Flickr page. Also available at www.wacoisd photos. Thank you, Mr. Ochoa, for always plugging the Flickr page. We have lots of great pictures out there. Yeah, well, no, you just can out, if you need to lift your day, go take a look. Our communications team does a great job posting pictures. This week, you should have received information in your email about another exciting, similar tradition that we have here in Waco ISD with the Educational Foundation. Please take a look. Let us know if you have any questions. You know, it's, it's, it's an exciting surprise. So check your email. Formal invitations for each of you, um, have been mailed to our, um, for our Waco ISD outstanding teacher and retiree luncheons that are coming up on May 21st and 22nd. Um, so again, those formal invitations will reach you in the mail. That's it. Thank you.
Lots of exciting things and lots of fun, uh, things to celebrate. We're excited to see the girls take it not just to game two, but game three. So, um, and with that, we are adjourned.